It being 6:30 PM on Wednesday, September 14th, I call the Finance Committee Appointment Committee Meeting to order. Mark?
I'm here and present, yes.
On the agenda tonight, we have a review of the meeting minutes from our June 29th meeting, and I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of our meeting, June 29th, 2022.
Move to approve minutes as presented.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I declare the meeting minutes approved. At this time, I'd like to open up discussion on any other business.
I would like to add an item for discussion tonight, and that is the makeup of the committee. As you know, can we talk about this?
Yes, yes.
As you know, the Finance Committee Appointment Committee is made up of the chair, or a member of the Finance Committee appointed by the FinCon, the moderator, and the town clerk. When I had presented this to the Finance Committee to do this originally, I had proposed that the third person besides a member of the Finance Committee, the moderator, be the chair of the Select Board. The Finance Committee wasn't comfortable at the time because, to be quite frank, the relationship between the selectmen and the Finance Committee wasn't the best at the time. So, we decided to go with the town clerk. Well, given the fact that the town clerk has missed several meetings, and probably is too busy for this particular committee, I would like to consider and ask the Finance Committee tonight, and I'd ask you, Dawn, this evening, if you would be willing to support an article that would amend the charter through a home rule petition legislation that would change the makeup simply in the town bylaw from the town clerk back to the chair of the Select Board. I think we'd have a better chance of having three members. I think it's important, and we appointed a member. It was just the two of us that did it the last time, and I don't think that's, well, I think we made a great decision, and we had great feedback from the Finance Committee. I think it should be a three-member committee, and that's the whole purpose that we did this, to have a public committee. So, I would like to ask the Finance Committee and the Finance Committee Appointment Committee to add an article to the Springtown Falltown Meeting Warrant for that purpose, and the warrant closes?
It closed today, but we'll make an exception for you folks.
You're a good man, Evan.
No, just because of the timing of your meeting. So, if you're gonna make a change, it won't be a heavy lift to just change that language in the bylaw.
Okay.
Okay. I agree. I feel as though the position of town clerk, even though it is an elected position, it is not a part-time position. It's a beyond full-time position, and it takes a lot of her time and attention, and I just feel badly there aren't the meetings that she has been able to attend. She was in her car because she wasn't able to be here, and there's no disrespect against Candy because I know she works incredibly hard.
Agreed.
But I think that it just, that being said, I know the Select Board is also on multiple committees as their role as well, but I think that it would give us the opportunity to have some continuity because in the event that the person could, we have someone represent the Select Board and not necessarily make it the chair?
We could just say a member of the Select Board.
Like how you are so that it can kind of be something that they can send.
Sure. I'm fine with that. Yeah, because, you know, coming up this year, I can't be on the committee in the spring because I'm up for reappointment, so I can't serve on the committee. So, they're gonna have somebody else represent, so you'll be the only constant on the Appointment Committee. So, I think it makes sense to have a member of the Select Board, and they could rotate it through the Select Board like we rotate it through the Finance Committee. So, I would make, if it's okay with you, I'd like to make a motion that we draft two warrant articles, it'd be two warrant articles, Evan. One would be a home rule petition to the legislature to change the charter, to change the Appointment Committee from the town clerk to the, a member of the Select Board as designated by the Select Board, and then a second article that would amend the bylaw, which would make the same change, because we'd have to do it in two places, right?
I believe so, yep.
Yep.
So, that's my motion.
Aye. Second. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I will bring this vote to the Finance Committee tonight and ask them to support the article as well moving forward. And then, Evan, I'll have a draft to you. I'll draft something tomorrow and send it to you.
Or just send us the basics of that in an email, and we can draft our.
Okay. Okay. Yeah, because we have to.
We've already done it in recent, so I'm just gonna.
Just, yeah, all you have to do is.
Take the ones we had on the last warrant and clip it.
Because it's, because we're not gonna do it the way they amended the charter when you were gonna do the town clerk. We're two-thirds voted town meeting and then the ballot.
Right.
Majority voted town meeting, and then hopefully David can get it through the legislature pretty quick, Mars.
Yep, absolutely.
Excellent.
Is there any other business?
Nope.
I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It is now 7:00 PM. I will call to order the meeting of the Grafton Finance Committee for Wednesday, September 14th. This meeting is being held live and in Zoom, so we will take attendance since we have members who are remote tonight. So, in the room tonight is Heather, Victoria, Angelina, Mark, Dan, and Nick. On Zoom is Sue, Skip, and Greg. So, we have.
And Dan.
And Dan. Oh, Dan. Oh, no, Dan. He threw me for a loop. So.
I'm gonna vote twice on every.
So, we have all nine of us tonight. That's exciting. All right. So, the first thing I want to do is I want to read a letter that we got from our town moderator back in May, and of course, we haven't met, so we had one quick meeting, but I thought this was very nice, and I want to put it in the record. It says, "Mark, Dan, Angelina, Greg, Heather, Andy, Roger, and Sue, thank you all so much for navigating the ins and outs of every article for town meeting. Your professionalism and humor are a delight to behold, both in and out of person, AKA Zoom. Have a lovely summer." Now, I had a lovely summer, so I hope you all, I hope you all had a lovely summer, so I'm glad that we, thank you, Dawn. I thought that was very nice that you did that. The first thing on the agenda is the meeting minutes of June 29th. I entertain a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any further discussion? Okay, all those by roll call. Heather?
Aye.
Victoria?
Aye.
Angelina?
Aye.
Mark, aye. Dan?
Aye.
Nick?
Aye.
Skip?
Aye.
Greg?
Aye.
Sue?
Aye.
Thank you. Call that unanimous. Next on the agenda, we have some bills. There are three bills. There's only two listed on the, two listed on the agenda, but there are three bills here. The first is our dues to the Association of Town Finance Committee in the amount of $250. I entertain a motion to approve that bill.
So moved.
Um, second.
Is there any further discussion? All those by roll call. Heather?
Aye.
Victoria?
Aye.
Angelina?
Aye.
Mark, aye. Dan?
Aye.
Nick?
Aye.
Skip?
Aye.
Sue?
Aye.
Greg?
Aye.
Can, is it already just, you wanna have us sign it here? We were just doing one signature, so can I just sign it? Is that okay?
Sure.
Okay. Mary, that's okay with you, one signature?
Yes.
Thank you. The other bill here is for $31.32 for IBA Print Shop, and it is for the wonderful nameplates that you see in front of Nick and Victoria. So, I entertain a motion to approve this bill as presented.
So moved.
Second.
All right. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Heather?
Aye.
Victoria?
Aye.
Angelina?
Aye.
Mark, aye. Dan?
Aye.
Nick?
Aye.
Sue?
Aye.
Greg?
Aye.
Skip?
Aye.
And then the final bill is for the printing. I'm gonna assume, Amber, that this is for the printing for the public hearing for the warrant? Yes, no, maybe?
Um, I haven't, that's not an official invoice yet.
Oh, that's just an order confirmation.
I apologize.
Oh, it's not an invoice.
I must have just left that in the folder.
My bad. My bad. I thought it was an invoice. Well, just so you know, it's $156.
Sorry about that.
No, don't be sorry. It's my fault. I should pay attention to what I'm doing. So, the next thing on the agenda is, well, before we get into the next thing on the agenda, I'm gonna add something to the agenda tonight, and I want to have a discussion with the committee to alter the makeup of the Finance Committee Appointment Committee. I'll explain why, but I'm gonna add that to the agenda. We'll discuss that at the end of the meeting, if that's okay with everybody. Okay. Feedback for the Bylaw Study Committee. Greg? The floor is yours.
What was that?
Feedback for the Bylaw Study Committee?
Yes.
That's your, I assume that's on the agenda for you.
Oh, I didn't ask to have that put in there, but it was a memo that was sent to all committees.
Yes.
So, it's something that we will need to talk about. Basically, we sent this letter out to all the committees. We identified which areas of the bylaws we thought those committees were connected to, and asked them for feedback on that or anything else in particular. And we're asking to have that response back to the committee by October 14th. So, that's.
Is there any specific, I would imagine the only thing that we would look at would be the bylaws concerning the Finance Committee.
Yeah, we, it specifically listed Article III Finance Committee.
Okay. So, I'm glad that's, so it's actually on the agenda, and I can bring it up?
You can.
Okay.
Yes.
So, what I would like to do is I would like to change the makeup of the Finance Committee Appointment Committee and replace the town clerk with a member of the Select Board that the Select Board designates. The reason for that is the town clerk is very busy and has not really attended many meetings, and the last two appointments were done by just Dawn and I. And I think you should have three members on the committee. So, I would like to suggest that we put an article, two articles on the warrant for the Falltown Meeting. One, home rule petition charter change, to change the charter that says that the makeup of the Finance Committee Appointment Committee would be, a member of the Finance Committee is designated by the FinCon, the town moderator, and a member of the Select Board is designated by the Select Board. I know we had an issue with that when we created the bylaw, and that's why we went with the town clerk, but I just really think you need to have three members on the committee.
You absolutely have to have something odd, yes.
Yeah. And so, you know, Dawn and I, when we came down to the last, when Victoria, when you were appointed, you know, we could have been a split vote. There were three great candidates, and you know, you just, you just need to have three members. So, I would like to do that. Now, the Finance Committee Appointment Committee met tonight, and it was just Dawn and I, which I wasn't surprised, and Dawn and I decided, we voted unanimously to recommend to the Finance Committee that we add that article. So, Dawn and I are in agreement that we want to do that, and I would like this committee to be in agreement to do that. So, there'd be two articles. One would be to amend the charter, the second would be to amend the bylaw, because it's in two locations on the warrant. And Evan said he'd be kind enough to add those articles for us for the Falltown Meeting Warrant.
So, one of the things that I, we've talked about in the committee is, don't repeat things in the charter and the bylaw. And I can see Skip shaking his head as, nodding as I was expecting. So, if we can list, if we can make it such that that is only listed in one place, then we don't have to keep the two places in sync.
I'm fine with that. What do you, where do you recommend that that be, Greg?
Well, if we don't have it in the charter and only have it in the bylaw, the actual makeup of the committee, then it is easier to update as needed in the future. We could do something like, the charter says we have a three-member committee that does the selection, and the composition is done by the bylaw, which is something that I've seen done in other places. But otherwise, if, the question, I guess the question is, how difficult, and do we want to have to go through the process of town meeting vote and either special legislation or a vote anytime we need to amend it in the future?
Well, this first time, we would have to amend the charter somehow.
Right, but I think, so to Greg's point, I think what we would do is amend the charter to say that the, you know, there shall be a selection committee, or I'm not saying this verbatim, but shall be a selection committee made up of three members, the makeup of which is, is in Article III of the Grafton bylaws. So, then, next time you want to make a change, you only have to tweak the bylaw.
Yeah.
We like that?
Some, it'll be more eloquent than that.
That's, well, you're an eloquent man.
Right now.
Greg, Sue, and Skip, how do you feel about this? And then I'll open it up for everybody here. How do you feel about?
That's kind of like where I was going. I was actually going to pull up the town bylaws, but the website's asking me to log it first, so I'll have to pull it up for my other, my marked-up copy from our review.
I have it open if you want me to share it to the screen, if anybody needs it.
No, it's boring. It needs a lot of changes.
Yeah. I think the bylaw, the Article III, I think is in pretty good shape. I didn't see anything in there that I thought needed to change. I don't know if you've all had a chance to look at it, but go ahead.
I had one, one small thing I emailed to William already anyway, but it was the, it mentions putting the warrant, printing out the warrant and bringing it to certain places, it mentions the library branches, which don't exist anymore, so.
We gotta fix that, make it library branch.
Yeah, that's, that's one of the things I've already noted in, in my list of changes to the committee. So, it's kind of treading into committee reports later, but each of us, or several of us have gone through the bylaws and come up with our own list of simple changes, editorial changes, and things where we need to talk about it. So, we're building up a list of, of places to review, and that was one of the things that we've, we've noticed along with the, how we publish notices, especially since at one point, we were about to not have a town news.
Yeah, fortunately, we have a local newspaper now. It's nice that that happened. So, how do you feel about making that change in, in the bylaw to make it a rotating member of the Select Board as well as a rotating member of the FinCon and the moderator? How do people feel about that?
I know we originally talked about the Select Board, and we kind of moved away from the Select Board and went to the town clerk as kind of a separation of powers thing because the, the Finance Committee is supposed to be representative of the legislative branch, and the town, the board of selectmen is the executive branch, so we're, that's one of the reasons why we used the town clerk instead of Select Board on that. So, that's something to consider.
I know, I know in Groton, the chair of the Select Board sits on the Appointment Committee, hasn't been an issue. It's actually worked quite well.
Well, it might be.
Sue, you were the most vociferous against having a Select Board member on it the last time.
Yeah, I still don't want a Select Board member for all the reasons that Greg mentioned, and I just think that we need to stay autonomous because we're the liaison between the town and the town meeting. So, I mean, I don't want the Select Board on.
So, is there somebody else besides the town clerk that you can think of that would make sense? The town clerk, this isn't working out.
The Finance Director.
Yes, I was gonna say, how about our Finance Director?
How do you feel about that, Evan?
I don't, I don't think it solves your problem. I mean, I think, I'd be fine with it, but I don't, I don't see how it, I don't see how it's any less political than.
Yeah, it feels odd for the first town staff member to be making political-ish appointments.
That's a good point.
Yeah, because if anybody would have said town administrator, but I'm a political appointee of the Select Board, so it's the same thing.
Same thing.
Could it be a, like, the town clerk appoint somebody to it? I mean, I get, feel like the town clerk was sort of an arbitrary, unrelated person that we chose instead of the Select Board member that you proposed?
Yep.
So, it, I guess it's kind of, I don't really see any need to stick to that either.
Angelina?
I'm open to other options. I don't like either the Finance Director or the Select Board option, just for keeping things separate.
Well, let me, let me ask a question. There are nine members on the Finance Committee. What if it's two members of the FinCon and the moderator? But then that sort of defeats the moderator, right?
Yeah.
The moderator is.
Then FinCon becomes self-perpetuating.
Yep, that's true. That's true.
I don't have a problem if we ask the town clerk to appoint somebody in her place as long as it's not the Select Board member or a department head. She may be able to appoint somebody from, I don't know, another committee in town.
So, you would say to change the wording to the town clerk or her designate, or the town clerk's designate?
Yes.
Almost somebody from her office.
Well, she could designate someone from her office, but that's, that's a town employee, so I'm, I'm not. I have to tell you, I don't see the conflict that you all see with the Select Board. I don't see it.
I, I think.
But I, but I, when I've been on the Finance Committee for a long time, and I've seen the conflicts some Select Board members have done, so.
Yeah, I was gonna say, it feels like there's like a little bit more history in Grafton of the Finance Committee and the Select Board sometimes disagreeing on some important things.
Yep.
And maybe it's just because we're on, on the Finance Committee side of it, but it feels like it, it was important to have the Finance Committee's alternative perspective on things, and having Select Board involved in appointing Finance Committee might kind of put a damper on that, you know, diversity of viewpoints.
Yeah, I got you. And Sue, I respect your opinion. I really do. I understand what you're saying.
So, it basically needs to be like a member at large, but who holds a committee seat?
Somewhere.
Is that basically what?
That's what, that's, you would, you would want that, but what committee? All right, well, let's think about the elected boards we have.
Mark, what, what, what you're running up against here now in the end, in what Sue was saying about it being autonomous, is one of the reasons why I didn't like having it become a committee of three people, if you separate it and just have the town moderator make the appointments off of the list for the current job description, we have never had a problem with anybody being able to fulfill the duties to the town.
But the problem is, is it's not done in an open, public process. You know, the good thing about the, the Appointment Committee is, you know, we've, we've had some wonderful interviews of people coming before us for appointment. You know, the night that we appointed Victoria, we had three amazing candidates. Nobody in the public would see that if the moderator was making the appointment because the moderator does not have to do it in public. So, the whole point was to have a public process, and I think that public process works. The problem is, you know, you, you went through it. It was a pretty good process, right? The problem is, is you don't have, you don't, we just don't have the town clerk showing up to the meetings, so we need a third member. I, you know, there's no problem having a member of the Finance Committee there. We're always gonna be there, and the moderator's great. She's always here, but we have not been able to have the town clerk attend every meeting.
Could you just?
All right, so let me ask you a question.
Yes.
Every time you interview somebody for a position in Groton, is it televised?
Absolutely.
Every time you hire somebody in the town of Groton?
No, 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 I'm talking about for boarding committee members, it's always done in public. I'm the appointing authority. I don't know, televise my appointments when I hire the building inspector or the police chief or the DPW director.
So.
Why not?
If, if Dawn, so it was my impression, and I could be wrong about this, but I felt like when Dawn came on, she hadn't done any of this before, and we had those appointments right away, and it seemed like she was uncomfortable making the decision without any input from the Finance Committee because she didn't know what we needed. And so, I wonder if her position has changed any now that she's been in the position for a year, and if we could just have it be her appointing someone publicly, like still have the interview, but have her be the one making the decision.
Well, the whole, the whole point was to, it had nothing to do with Dawn being the moderator or whoever was being the moderator. We wanted to, I wanted, my recommendation was I wanted to see a public process, posted committee meeting for interviews for membership on the Finance Committee. That was my whole motivation.
I, I think when you have a committee, even if it's just three people versus one person doing all that process publicly, something you're getting is the decision, the thought process that goes into the decision has to be spoken aloud between the three people.
Yep.
Two people would be a majority. They can't meet and discuss it before the meeting.
Yep.
So, every, every reason that somebody wants to share with the rest of the decision-making entity has to be spoken out loud in that public meeting. If it's just one person making the decision, even doing, you know, the public interviews and, and giving their explanation, they could still have a reason they don't speak out loud, that they're keeping to themselves.
Yep.
And I just, I think this just gives us that, that little extra bit of transparency to make sure all the reasons are, are spelled out.
But right now, you're still struggling with a way to find it, to have this be an independent process of the other parts of town government and have it work.
It has worked. It has worked. Unfortunately, it's worked with two of us, not three of us.
Could it be the town moderator and another person the town moderator appoints, like, like the deputy town moderator or something like that?
Mark?
You still lined up with over-representation by one group. Sorry, Sue.
Go, go ahead, Sue.
I, we have to remember that the town moderator with the town meeting forms a committee, and, and the town moderator makes those appointments, that's not done publicly.
That's right.
So, and I understand where you're coming from, Mark, but I think the reason we started this way, and I kind of agree with Angelina, that she was unsure of herself, and I think that if she holds, if we could put it in the bylaw, asking her if she would do her interviews publicly, and then we can give her some input, I can agree with that, but I really don't want a Select Board member as one of them, and she can still.
All right, so then I would make a motion, or I entertain a motion, if somebody's willing to make it, that the, we amend the bylaw, what you said to do with the charter, which is, which is fine, and then just concentrate on Article III of the bylaws, and have it say the moderator, member of the Finance Committee is designated by the FinCon, and a member designated by the town clerk, and just do it that way.
Town clerk or their designate.
Town clerk or their designate.
Yep.
So, would somebody like to make that motion?
Wait, say it again.
It would be made up of the, the three-member, the Appointment Committee would be made up of the moderator, a member designated by the Finance Committee, and the town clerk or the town clerk's designate.
Are we putting any restrictions on who the town clerk can?
Nope.
Assign as their designate?
Nope, because then you get into too many exceptions, and the bylaw will be longer than the process to appoint.
So, could she appoint us?
So, the, the bylaw is section three dot, Article III, Section 2 already covers that. So, if we just make that change to charter, then the bylaw will cover it, and then we can adjust the bylaw once the, the charter no longer lists the exact people.
So, let me ask you this. So, what if we just, because obviously we need to do some work on the third member. So, what if we were to just put an article on the warrant to clean up the warrant, I mean, the charter, to get rid of the three names in the charter, and then we can take some time and maybe at the Springtown Meeting come up with the third member? That way, we can take some time and think about it. Does that, does that make sense?
So, this is a stupid question, but how are bylaws amended?
There are no stupid questions. Town meeting.
Okay.
And then.
So, either way, we have to go through town meeting?
Yeah, but.
But it's a different vote? Is that what it is?
The charter is the hard part because we, the charter has to go to the legislature.
Okay.
So.
Or a vote in the general election.
Yeah, no, we're gonna do it by home move petition, Greg, so it'll just be the.
I was just saying that is one of the other options.
Town, yeah, town meeting and then the legislature.
But um, we did the, to to do this in the first place, we did special legislation and took forever.
That, that's right, but that, I blame that on COVID. Once Dan got involved, it went through pretty quick. Once we got Dan going on it. Dave, you're Dan, I'm sorry. Once Dave got involved, Dave did a great job, and he ushered it right through.
Mister Chair, you have uh, someone with their hand up in the audience? Do you wanna allow them to speak?
Absolutely.
Oh, I'm sorry, I.
I just thought of something seeing that name.
Hi.
No, I don't know if that works. Hey, Amy, go ahead. The floor is yours.
Um, I had a question that I threw into the Q and A, and I guess the question is, why can't it just be an at-large position?
But somebody has to designate that position. That's the the problem.
Sure, sure. So members of the general public can apply and be interviewed by the Select Board for the position on this subcommittee. It's a small-time commitment. It's a good way to get people's kind of foot in the door in terms of encouraging volunteering. Um, I mean, because you only really do this a couple times a year as needed.
That problem is though, then you're back, the problem with that is then you're back to the influence of the Select Board, and that's something the Finance Committee doesn't want.
I guess I saw that as minimal influence as opposed to having the Select Board just randomly appoint somebody. I I saw it as going through the normal process, but I see your point.
Mark.
Go ahead, Sue.
Why don't we ask if a school committee member can't be on because they have the largest budget?
You know, I was just gonna suggest that.
They have a lot vested in this town, so.
Yeah. And one of the criteria we had, we we used for the town clerk was that it was an elected position.
They're both elected committees, and now you're giving authority to the school committee who has the largest budget because you don't want the Select Board because they're gonna collude.
That doesn't make sense.
Yeah.
Um, alright, so why don't we, alright, so I would entertain a motion that we amend the charter. We we have a special legislation, special act for the charter that changes the wording, that eliminates the names in the charter and designated as set by the bylaw, and then we can meet with the bylaw committee and come up with the three members. And we can come back to the spring town meeting for that, because we're not gonna have another appointment before next spring anyway.
Yep.
So why don't we do it that way? Is that okay with the committee?
I move that we recommend modification of the charter at town meeting to re- to replace the section that says the members of which shall be appointed by a three-person committee that shall consist of the town clerk, member of the Finance Committee, who is not being considered for reappointment, and the town moderator, and state that it is, shall be appointed by a three-person committee as described in Article Three, Section Two of the town bylaws.
Is there a second?
Second. I have a question. Is that gonna cause problems because there's not actually anything in Article Three?
Article Three simply says town clerk, member of the Finance Committee. So it's already there. So now we can take time to figure out who that third member is, and we can think about it.
That makes sense.
I think that's a wonderful solution for this tonight. Thank you very much. I'm glad we talked this out. Uh, any further discussion?
Does anyone wanna hear that section of the?
No. No, thank you.
I don't, Mark, why didn't, I mean, Mark, can we just ask Greg to send it out to us?
Sure. Sure.
If he would email it to us.
Yep, Greg, e- email that section out to everybody, please.
Okay.
Alright, any further discussion? All those in favor by roll call? Heather?
Hi.
Toria?
Hi.
Angelina?
Hi.
Mark, I.
I.
Nick?
Hi.
Skip?
No.
Sue?
Hi.
Uh, Greg?
Hi.
Votes eight to one, uh, carries. Thank you, everybody. Appreciate that. Uh, Finance Committee meeting updates. Heather, Opera Committee, what's going on?
Do you have the list? I have it written. I don't have it.
I, no. I wasn't prepared for that. Hold on.
Correct. Mary sent it to me, so let me see if I can.
I can, uh, yeah, just.
I think it'd be easier to see it rather than me talk numbers.
Yep, let me um.
Because it's a lot of, it's.
Yeah, I thought it was copied on that. Latest revision. Yeah, I got it right here. Sorry, I have like Mary needs to email me less than I can find things a little bit.
Greg, you're fast. You have Greg's email. You'll have it in your thing.
Okay, Charter revision.
Okay. Go ahead.
Alright, so um, we met, it was like two weeks ago, I believe. Um, and this is our fi- our final. I think we still have about a hundred and ninety-four thousand, but I'll get to that. So the top part, um, actually, right when we started, this was money that was already um, allocated. So it's the HVAC. That doesn't include the um, the amount that we took out, right? Evan, didn't we take out some of the money from the HVAC and removing it?
It it it's all still that same twenty-five hundred.
Okay.
You mean two point five million?
Two point five million.
Whatever.
Small change. So let's just go to the school.
That's like one air conditioner.
Right, exactly. No, do you want me to just go into that just a little bit?
Yes.
Okay, so um, we allocated two point five million for the school HVAC. Um, it wound up costing about two point two million is the projection because we got some grant funds and some earmark funds.
Yep.
We also had a boiler that went at a middle school catastrophically last week, um, which is about three hundred thousand dollars. So we are going to keep that number at twenty-five hundred for HVAC and just amend the Select Board's vote to capture that we're doing work in two different places.
Perfect. So how did you come up with the final?
Five million? Yeah, that's what, yeah.
How did you come up with the final um?
All these numbers?
Yeah.
So what we did was, we took um, through the consultants and the um, uh, the the email that we sent out to everyone, and hopefully everybody did theirs. There are um, survey. We could, we, they were great. They um, compiled all the information. And this is basically what what we, what we thought
Okay.
Grafton wanted, the Grafton constituents wanted. Um, so we have about a hundred and ninety-four thousand that has not been allocated, and we are still in talks with putting it towards mental health.
Like that.
And we're talking with, um, we're trying to figure out basically how to best utilize it for Grafton. Not necessarily schools, but Grafton.
Grafton in general.
Yeah.
So the sidewalks, seven hundred and fifty thousand, how many?
That is just going, that's, uh, I believe the school, correct? The north?
That was one of the ideas that was floated. It's not set in stone yet. We can, I think we voted to leave it at the discretion of Paul Canoyer.
Yeah.
DPW Director, um, because seven hundred and fifty thousand isn't gonna go very far.
Far, yeah.
And so he was gonna play around with some ideas to get the most bang for our buck.
Awesome. You guys did a great job.
Yeah, I was out, I was, and the consultants were great, and they uh, they compiled a lot of data and threw it all back at us, but I think, I think it worked out well.
Excellent. Well, thank you. Any questions for Heather on the process?
I do have one question. Economic development, a hundred thousand, what is that for?
Do we have the details?
So we um, do you remember we did the LRRP process?
Yes.
Um, and so that was some economic development suggestions in north uh, Grafton over kind of by Perry Hill, that neighborhood. So what we decided to do was make it an even number that the planner can work with me to basically choose à la carte from that list of however much we can get done with a hundred thousand dollars of things that were already on the LRRP list that was presented to the town.
That answer your question, Sue?
Yes, thank you.
Excellent. Well, nice segue, Sue. Any update on the DPW?
DPW, we are meeting next week. We've been having trouble getting together for July and August. Um, we are, hopefully, the twenty-second, the next Thursday will be our last meeting, but we have some invoices that we have to approve. Um, the money, after we got the budget all straightened out and saw that we were not over budget, um, there were still some things we weren't able to buy because we didn't know where we stood. And so um, some of those things are being done. The invoices will be in, and hopefully we'll be able to approve them all next Thursday. And hopefully, that will be our last meeting, but I can't guarantee it. And I think we're, and and the way it looks is that we're still going to be um, under budget a little bit. The CIPC has not met, um, Evan is meeting with the um, having a summit committee September twenty-second, and then after that's all done, then CIPC will will have their meeting after that. Um, school committee has not um, started their budget process. They're waiting on Evan because I think Evan, you're in transition from soft right to VEDAR, correct?
Yes.
So we're kind, so they're kind of waiting on Evan um, to get back to them, and then they are hoping by their next um, school committee meeting, they'll have something to discuss for their budget process.
Awesome.
Yeah, they're working. We we separated the chart of accounts for school v town.
Yep.
Um, and so that, some of it is on our side, but some of it is on their side too. So we're all working towards it together and should be pretty, pretty smooth. I I would think that they might start talking about it, but I I'm not anticipating we're gonna start in earnest till, you know, November.
When we do our regular.
Yeah, exactly.
Awesome.
Evan, Evan, I'm correct that the transition was not that easy because software really doesn't, it's not copacetic with a lot of municipal.
Yeah, so um, it wa- it was very easy for me because Mary just updated me once a week, and it seemed fine for my office. I mean, I gotta tell you, it was no problem at all. Um, but no, Mary, and Mary, you can speak to this if you want, but it was, there was a lot of moving parts and a lot of things that were discovered as we, as they actually did the work.
You'll be ready for the budget, you'll be ready for the budget?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, ready for the budget now.
Awesome.
Sure.
Yeah, I'm I'm already giving like some of our data to and I'm, I'm already working with them and mapping out the old accounts to the new accounts. Um, yeah, there there was a lot of uh, work um, for the uh, initial setup with VEDAR. You know, they transferred the chart of accounts, but there's still a lot of work that I had to do in there. I had to set up the receivables. I had to set up all the receivable links. And then um, there there was some learning curves, uh, because the the school requested um, you know, their own chart of accounts. So we learned that, you know, Anita has to process her own journal entries. They have to process their own pay payroll, um, even the cash receipts. They have to process their own cash receipts. So we're working on implementing policies and procedures and and updating those. Um, so so it has been a slow start, but um, uh, we're we're getting there.
Awesome. Thank you very much. I appreciate that. Um, Greg, I'm gonna assume this means bylaw uh, review committee. Anything else you wanna add?
Yeah, um, so we we do have a rough calendar of when uh, things are going to happen. Uh, we're looking for all committee reviews to be in within uh, two weeks. And, or sorry, four weeks from today, and then we are planning several uh, public meetings and some outreach to get uh, information out to the townspeople for anybody else that has anything that they would like us to review. We're gonna go over the feedback we've reviewed from the uh, the res- feedback that we've received from the departments and committees and uh, plan our uh, recommendations from there. We'll have some more public review meetings of those, and we hope to have uh, everything out to by, at midsummer to have have the uh, full list of changes, and we're planning to work with uh, Town Administrator's Office and Legal to make sure that all the, as as we go along, to make sure that all the the changes that we're making or recommending to be made uh, fit within what's allowable and that they're all properly worded and everything.
So you're looking to come back a year from now with your proposed changes, not the spring, next fall?
Right, yeah, the uh, the charter description is that they will be presented at the Fall Town Meeting
Okay.
in the year ending in three and eight.
Perfect, perfect. Well, you guys have been busy. Great job. Thank you so much.
Have some two cents to add to that from the town clerk's perspective. One of the big things that we have to get figured out, Dave was gonna be talking to Evan about this, is what actually belongs in the charter and what belongs in the bylaws? And let's get rid of everything that's not where it's supposed to be, which is one of the reas- with primary reason for me saying, no, I don't wanna send off another uh, charter change for something that we may wind up just saying, get rid of it from the charter and leave it in the bylaws. One of the things, Mark, um, just to make it simple, is we have a whole laundry list of appointments that the Select Board and the Town Administrator make in both the bylaws and the charter, and they don't even really duplicate each other. There's a couple of questions. One of them is, do they belong in the charter or do they belong in the bylaws? And the second sort of part of that is, do we even need to list any of those anywhere to start with? So that's something that Dave was taking from our last meeting to go and talk to Evan about. Um, if we don't need to have a bylaw stating what is done under Massachusetts law anyways, why have a bylaw to muck things up? And the same goes for duplicating stuff and trying to track and make sure that things stay the same in byo- in bylaw and charter, is to get them, get rid of them from the one that they don't belong in.
Makes sense.
So there's a lot of moving parts going on with this, and it, the bylaws just haven't been looked at for so long that they're there's a, the, the change list that we're getting is gonna wind up being bigger than the bylaws.
Yeah, the the last time this committee was convened was twenty years ago, and it's supposed to happen every five, so.
So you guys are doing twenty years' worth of work in two years?
Yep.
That's a lot of work. Thank you so much for all you, for all you're doing on that. Go ahead, Dan.
So, yeah, that's actually a a really good point about taking things out that don't need to be in either one, like, like I I mentioned, the library branches, maybe the, you know, explicitly naming locations doesn't need to be done in a bylaw. Maybe it could just say at, you know.
The way, the way our charter reads is five public places. It doesn't list the places.
Right. Yeah.
Yeah, and we we actually use three or four different phrases to describe those public places uh, using different at combinations of adjectives, so.
Did you have a question?
No.
Victoria? Alright, thank you. Great update, gentlemen. Appreciate it. Andy, you're here. Come on up to the table. It's nice to see you, sir.
Good to see all my FinCom friends.
What is your update on the Library Committee?
Alright, so the library is down to uh, basically the five punchless items that it has been for the last few months, which um, you know, I guess projects are slow going, but um, they finally installed the door at the bottom of the stairs, so we can partition the top half off from the bottom, but there are some some minor issues that have gone along with that, so uh, those being dealt with. The HVAC controls have been an issue, but the work's complete on those, and there's awaiting um, sign off from the consultant. Um, I don't know if you guys had heard about the leaks in the community room, but um.
Who hasn't heard about the leaks in the community?
Well.
Community won't stop talking about it.
So now everybody's gonna know about the leak. Um, yeah, so uh, we didn't meet in August. When we met in July, we had no rain, so we couldn't track the leaks. Um, and then we got all that rain in August, uh, but it didn't leak, so they're gonna figure out, you know, try and do a flood test or something and figure out where, where that leak's coming from. Still, still working on it. Um, we've got some conflicting info from the manufacturer on the humidifier for the um, historical doc- historical documents room. It was, they're gonna mount it inside the room, then in the ceiling. Now, the ceiling seems to be a bad idea. Um, or the size of the unit in the ceiling seems a bad idea, so they're gonna figure that out. Um, and figuring out, uh, they have two sets of doors in the teen space that need to be configured. Um, right now, they're getting uh, additional installation quotes because they've been higher than expected, and they're having longer lead times on the materials as well.
That's everywhere.
Yeah. Um, they begun work, or will be beginning work, excuse me, this month to uh, adjust counter heights for ADA compliance and um, Historic District Commission is still working to get the restored weights and measure cabinet moved over to the library and into its new home.
So overall, project's a success. So you'll be closing it out once those issues are done?
Yes.
In like a year or two.
But that's, yeah, so um, December, we meet the first, the first Monday of the month. December will uh, be my one-year anniversary on the committee, at which, you know, uh, Irene said I'd probably have two or three meetings to go to. Um, and I fully expect us to be meeting through December, so.
Well, I'm glad you're, thank you for continuing to represent us on there. We appreciate it. Alright, um, thank you for coming out tonight, Andy. Appreciate the update. Any questions, Andy? Alright, uh, public, uh, the TRICOM Subcommittee's meeting next Wednesday night. We're gonna get the estimates from uh, Evan and Jay. I'm looking forward to that. So Angelina and I will be at that meeting next Wednesday. Are we meeting here in person or are we doing it on Zoom?
No, I actually don't remember. I'll pull it up.
Colleen, how are we meeting? Zoom or in person? Oh, there she is.
Can't hear you.
You're muted.
Are you muted?
Talk louder.
Did you say it's Wednesday?
It's Wednesday, the twenty-first.
Never confirmed.
Oh, it was, I I got something today.
Okay.
Didn't I get something today?
I've never gotten a confirmation.
And we can't hear Colleen. She's talking. Sure, she's making a lot of sense.
She's like, this is my dream.
And now she's going.
My dream right now.
Your dream right now? Oh, 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 Andy, did you hear what he just said?
He's in so much trouble.
Yeah.
But not until Colleen can fix her microphone.
Right, exactly.
I'm protected.
You're in the clear.
Alright, so we're meeting next Wednesday. We'll figure out where.
And what time?
Seven o'clock.
Okay.
We'll figure out either in person or in Zoom, and then we'll report back to you at the next meeting.
It's actually not posted.
It's not posted, okay.
So, I I can't pull it up right now.
Okay, so I'll let you know.
Put it in my calendar right now.
When I know, you know. Um, so that's that update. So public hearing schedule. Amber, we're posted for what two dates? Oh, there's Colleen calling. Hold on. Yes?
Don't tell her what I said.
Sure, she, she answered you.
It's on Zoom, and she just sent the post-it to the town clerk today. So we'll be doing it on Zoom next Wednesday at seven.
Okay.
Thank you. Um, okay.
The public hearings are on September twenty-eighth and September twenty-ninth.
Okay. Um, I just narrowed it down to two nights. I I told Amber not to advertise a third night. I, we did, we've never used three nights. We don't need three nights. I think we can.
So September twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth?
Twenty-nine, those two nights. And so when will we get the warrant from you so that Amber can start scheduling who we wanna come and see us?
They will close it on the twentieth.
Okay.
Uh, and you can have it immediately after that.
Alright, and so then we'll be able to invite the people, and I'll work with. All right, and so then we'll be able to invite the people and I'll work with Amber to schedule.
And we can tell you, Amber can tell you who the people are going to be beforehand.
Okay.
I mean, it's not going to
So we could go ahead and schedule it.
drastically is going to change, yeah.
So Amber, why don't you and I talk and figure out who, what nights who's coming in and divide it up and take it from there. Is that all right?
Yeah, absolutely.
Right, that's what we'll do.
Uh, just Amber, while, while you're still on, you, you, you might, there's so few articles that are of any substance.
We might just need one night.
You might not, just need one night. So that might be a consideration is to look, if you're only bringing in three people, let's load them all up on the front and spill over to the second night if you need it.
If we have to.
I
You don't think we will?
No, I think the park is probably going to be the biggest conversation and the rest of it is pretty straightforward.
Okay, and you'll be most of the other articles?
Yeah, yeah, and if not, I can speak to
All right, so probably just the twenty-eighth, maybe the twenty-ninth. All right, um, anybody else have anything else you want to talk about? Talk about how terrible the Red Sox are, how bad the Patriots were on Sunday. Is there any, uh, any conversations we wanted? That was a terrible game on Sunday. Oh, it was awful. Terrible, terrible, Andy, terrible. Um, Nick, anything? Skip, anything else? All right, Sue?
No.
Greg?
I'm good.
Have a great, have a great trip back from Colorado. It's nice to see you.
Thank you.
And um, I will call us adjourned. Thanks, everybody for being here. Appreciate it.
Have a great night.
Bye.[1786.98]